You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Podcast Network. Find all of our shows at wearelibertarians.com. You're listening to the We Are Libertarians Network. Learn more at wearelibertarians.com.
Welcome to the Boss Hogs Liberty Podcast. This is episode number 340 of the Central United's favorite podcast, Jeremiah Morrell, joined by executive video producer, audio engineer, the man who made us look better than we deserved at the Newcastle on tap, Mr. Zach Bircham, and my forever co-host, Mr. Dakota Davis, who is busier than ever before. What are we doing today, man?
Today's episode features three of the seven candidates that are seeking the three open seats for Henry County Council at large. They are all Republicans running in the Republican primary. This is going to be an interesting episode. All three of these guys have been on the podcast before. We have Jonathan Phillips to my left, and then Jay Davis to Jeremiah's right, and then all the way at the end there, we have Mr. Chad Mallico. We're going to be talking to these guys, basically going to get started talking about their backgrounds, why they decided to run. And then we're going to be talking about renovations in the county building, county insurance, American Rescue Plan Funds, the jail, homelessness, and the expo project. And then we're going to finally talk to these guys about if they were king for a day, what they would do with all that power. So make sure you stick around until the very end of the show.
This show is about our lives in rural Indiana, where to push your boundaries and make you think as individuals. Sometimes we'll provoke you, other times we'll make you laugh, but hopefully you'll always learn something new. Just wrapped up a very much extended edition of Patreon where we learned Dakota has, he's been shopping for a bookbag. And, and, and that the, there's no reason that you have to learn Spanish in high school. If you want to know more, join patreon.com/boss hog liberty, sign up at any level and you will get the show notes to the episode, email or dropped into a special Facebook group before every episode. So you can follow along at home. And then the, the audio from that episode is also sent directly to you. You can get your pod catcher, you can get it emailed to you. So you can, you can play along. Fun little community on the, on the boss hog Patreon page though, but it's exclusive to the people that helps support the show.
That's right. Boss hog liberty, just click the support now button on the website. You can also send us a voicemail on there. If you sign up at $50 or more a month, you get a shout out at the front of every episode. And those folks are Mr. Jonathan Phillips, Andy Moore Buick and GMC in Fishers, Indiana. And we also have Mr. Anthony Meyer, who is doing his best to keep the country running, trucking goods all across the United States. And then we also have Sports Corner Newcastle. We appreciate them very much. And then we also have Jeremiah taking away the special sponsors for the candidate series. We talked to one of them on the bonus episode on Saturday.
That's right. We have Wylens Flowers. The, that is the longest time supporting sponsor of the candidate series. The official florist of the podcast and has done all of our weddings and all of Zach's apologies. And he does, he's just kidding. He's, Zach's in Disney mode. He's just happy to be here. And the, the newest business is coming to downtown Newcastle, Ink and Nail Brew House. We did get to talk to the, the, the top chef down there on the, the on tap live episode. Really exciting. They, they're going to have, it sounds like they're going to have some really good sandwiches and burgers down there too, and a lot of different activities. So looking forward to getting down there. They said maybe next month, if early May at the latest. So have, have an opportunity to go, go support them soon. With all of that out of the way, we are finally ready to start the show Dakota.
Yeah. Welcome back, the three of you. All of our, all of you guys are alumni of the Boss Hog Liberty Podcast, but this is the first time you've all been on at the same time. So we're going to start with Chad over here. We're going to just have you tell us a little bit about yourself, your background, remind everybody all of your professional experience and why you're running for office.
Sure. I appreciate the opportunity to show up, guys. It's good seeing you guys again, sitting in the big chair behind the mic. So as most know, I was on the council. I stepped off the council a couple of years ago to take care of a few things. And, you know, I worked a much, I worked much different capacity back then. So my demanding day job on top of unfortunately, my mother being diagnosed with dementia was just not a great time to rerun for office again. So happy to report both of those things have at least improved. I no longer work a normal day job anymore. I'm concentrating on my real estate and mom is doing pretty good. I mean, for a nearly 89 year old with dementia, she's, I would say she's doing pretty good in her assisted living setup now. So it's been a challenge, but we're, so I'm, I'm back to the point where I feel like I have the time to step back into that role as the numbers guy, as a everyone used to refer to me as. And so, you know, my background, I've lived in Henry County pretty much my entire life. You know, I've been in sales and management for most of my life. Last position was with the large insurance company here in town and did the ops manager for their benefits there. So, and then beyond that, I've been involved in a lot of different peripherals. One of the most that I really enjoy and something I think has a great impact on the community is the RDC, the redevelopment commission. They've done a phenomenal job over the past several years of growing the industries and are now branching out and looking at some opportunities for some potential housing in some areas. Because that's an absolute dire need we have in this community, something I've been preaching way before I was even on the council the first time. So I'm really excited to be back. I'm excited to be here and appreciate the opportunity.
Is there anything specific that happened or has been on your mind where you're like, I gotta get back in there?
You know, it was, it was always a pause. That was the plan. I had some things I wanted to take care of. I mean, with, you know,
So you always knew you were going to be back.
That was, I didn't throw my, my signs. Let's say these are the same ones I've had since the last time. So, you know, that's a good financial decision.
They don't say reelect.
They do not say reelect because I'm not running for reelection. So I'm
We learned that in the judge race.
Yeah. Apparently that's a brutal race for sign accuracy.
Yes, I'm running for an election. So yeah, so no, I, it's a good financial decision on my part. And it was, it was kind of always the plan. I, I will say it, it happened quicker than I thought it would. But you know, the opportunity arose and I'm in the position I am in. And so not having the day job certainly frees up my time to where I can really get back into it. Cause contrary to what some believe, the council is not one meeting a month for an hour and a half. I, during the jail construction and working with our financial advisors, there were nights I went to bed at three o'clock in the morning. You were talking 10 at your class. There's nights at three o'clock in the morning, I was still trying to crunch numbers to figure out how to get Jacob added to the program and working with Kenan. And, you know, there, it's not the two hours a month type job that some people think it is. And, you know, I thought I was more knowledgeable than most when I got on the first time. And it's, it's a whole different world. I describe it as you kind of get behind the curtain and see what the little green men pulling, pulling the levers to use the Wizard of Oz here. But it's a whole different world when you get behind the, when you get behind the bench and actually see what's going on. And so, yeah, it's, I'm glad that I have the time now. And since I do, I had several people approached me. Honestly, this wasn't my plan this year, but several people approached me. And it's several folks that, you know, in a few years, our county is going to have a major shift. Several of the long-term elected officials will be retiring in the county in the next couple of years.
Department heads?
Department head elected officials will be retiring. And so having, you know, having someone with experience and, you know, a good grasp of how county finances operate, because they certainly do not operate anything like your personal checkbook or your business accounts. It's a whole new world. You're the, so we're the richest, poor people you'll ever meet.
So let's, let's hear from Jay Davis. Chad recycled his signs you shared with us before we got on. You, your signs have got more age on them than Chad's do.
Actually, yes, they do. Thank you, Jeremiah. And thanks, thanks to the guys here at Boss Hogs Liberty to have me on here. No signs are about 18 years old.
I do want to note that you both have chosen red, white and blue. And Chad only has four stars. You've got like 97 stars on your side. If we're, if we're comparing them.
There, there are quite a few stars on the bottom of that sign. The signs are probably 18 years old. Back then, I believe it was the first time that Nate Lamar ran for county council. I chose to run against him. Not so much that I was running against Nate, but I, I knew eventually I had planned to, to run for the sheriff's office and I wanted to have a campaign under my belt. And that's the campaign that I chose. And after losing that campaign, I put the signs in a, in a old plastic trash can at the back of the barn. And a couple of weeks ago, I went down and dug them out and, and had enough signs to get started.
All right. So tell us, tell us about your background. Your, your history is in the sheriff's department.
Yes. My history is in the sheriff's department. I was a 38 and a half year employee of the sheriff's department. I started there on a college work study program in 1984 and retired in late 2022, and then returned to work for Sheriff's Proles at the beginning of his term last year.
On the jail side?
On the jail side, correct.
All right. And the motivations to now to say, hey, 2024 at large race, you're going to jump in.
My motivation there is I've had a long time friendship with Harold Griffin, who is not going to run again. And he and I talked some time ago regarding stepping up again and running for his seat when he decided to give it up. So here we are.
All right. And then John Phillips or Jonathan Phillips is the sign says.
It does say Jonathan, but you can, everybody calls me John. That's what I, that's what I go by. Shorten it a little bit. I'm originally from Delaware County. We moved to Henry County about 20 years ago, my wife and I. I work currently, I'm a sales manager, Andy Moore Buick GMC in Fishers. I've been in the car business for almost 30 years, 20 years on the management side. I really want to run for county. A lot of everybody knows that I ran for city council. I want to be involved with, with, with the county. Originally, that's what I was going to look forward to do was to go to county. And then I was approached to run for the city election. I didn't expect a turnaround this quick. To be honest, I was just going to run for my district here in a couple of years and then was approached to run for at large. Once we found out Harold and Betsy and them were not going to run, I decided to give it a shot. I want to go in and I want to carry on what everybody's done before us. We're in a decent financial situation, but the, the key is to keep it there and continue. I've got two young daughters, Morgan and Harper, and I want them to see what we can be as elected as officials by opening an ear to, to our constituents, to our citizens, and by being able to listen and try to help out in the future by, just like you talked, we've got to bring in housing. I foresee, and it could be me, but I think in the next 10 years, Henry County is going to have a huge increase in housing or in people wanting to move to Henry County. If you look with me working in Fishers every day, everything's starting to spread out. People aren't scared to drive 35, 45 minutes to work. But not only will that help us with having people move here, it will help draw businesses in as well. So that way we can help out and try to draw some businesses in and, and all that.
You can see that, and I think we talked about this on the city, in the city election side, Hancock County, Indiana, and the number of new houses that they've built is incredible in the last two years. And then their permit, building permits for new houses. And then it, it kind of does lead to thinking that that, that build is coming this way. But Hancock County, Indiana is like one of the top 10 fastest growing populations in the state right now.
Audrey and I, we've been going to church over in Greenfield. And on Sunday, the pastor at the church that we've been going to, he said that he had read in the last week that Hancock County was the number one fastest growing county in the state. And it could double in population in the next five years. So, I mean, that's like, that's like 25 minutes away from my house to get to downtown Greenfield. Hancock County itself is, is not far from, from here at all.
They're taking it very seriously. They're putting in a second chick fully in Hancock County. So it's getting out of, it's, it's getting out of, out of control. All right. Let's, let's start down on, on this side of the building with, with Chad Mallico. In the, in the programmed questions that we had, and these, these are in the show notes, but we can, it's, it's all conversational. These are kind of a jumping off point and we'll, we'll see where things go. This is kind of a leftover question from the commissioners last week, but any council role in, in the building maintenance, we, we talked about last week that we've got essentially three major buildings downtown. And then they're trying, they're trying to sell some other things. Direction the county can go with, with funds from those sales, investment in these bill, in the county buildings and the inventory of what they, what they have and what they should have.
So one of the very last things I did of any importance while I was on the council was to bond for the monies that they're using on top of the potential ARPA funds they're talking now to do these renovations. The, you know, we have a amazing, beautiful historic courthouse here that has gone from many other communities like ours. I mean, so, and unfortunately, it always got pushed to the bottom of the pile when it came to repairs and maintenance. If you looked at the repairs and maintenance budget, the county had at times, it would be like you stuck in a way 20 bucks in a sock and praying that your house doesn't need anything. So there's some serious neglect that's happened over the years. So I would hope that the commissioners will work with the council to continue and the commissioners will work as a whole. That wasn't always the case when I sat on the council. The commissioner seemed to take reins and just run with it on many programs. ARPA will get to in a minute, but is a good example. But so I think, I hope the commissioners can work with the council and they can come up with solutions. I think they've got some great ideas, but I think there's also some major holes. I mean, I was talking to, I went to the work session that the council and the commissioners had when, you know, the guy came in with the windows and they talked about everything. But then you walk back down to the main staircase and you look up at the skylight and it's kind of scary to stand there. And I don't even know that that's going to be addressed. So I hope they can take a huge picture and go over the, when I was talking, Steve Dellinger and I were standing there and talking about it. And that wasn't even on the list from what he told me. So I hope they can really take heart and look at this. Cause I mean, yes, I think the county needs new windows, but do we need every single window replaced? Can we replace the bad ones? Can we try to hit all the high points? I hope that the commissioners will look at this really hard and try to, you know, utilize the dollars the best they can and work with the council to, you know, kind of be involved in that project. Cause it's a big, important project that's, you're talking nearly $10 million in repairs. It's, it's a significant amount of money.
Just on the, just on the courthouse?
Just on the courthouse.
The Masonic building in the Justice Center.
Now, the one thing we passed as the council in the court, in the bond, was it required that the majority of the money go to the courthouse? Because the Justice Center was, is relatively new in comparison, obviously. We're talking 20 years versus 160, 70 years. So it's, and then the Masonic building also falls under that. But I think the way the bond was written was that the $4 million of the bond, which is like 4.8ish million, had to go to the courthouse and the balance could go to the other Henry County buildings. It wasn't specifically named at any building.
Okay.
So, but then that's the bond itself. I think they're looking at spending about that much money out of the ARPA funds as well for it, from what I understood from the, the meeting, the work session.
So Jay, what, what are your feelings on the, on the building side? And if you, if you're elected to this office, obviously you're going to have the purse strings for the county or one seventh of the purse strings.
And obviously I think it's important that for the Henry County citizens that we maintain our, our property. I think that's important to all of us. You know, having run a jail that became in, you know, dire needs of repair and things like that. Over a period of years, it quickly decreased in condition to the point where we couldn't repair it. And we don't want any of these other buildings to be, to become shambles, quite honestly. And quite honestly, I believe that probably the old courthouse was headed fairly rapidly that way due to the, just the mere age of the old courthouse. Yes, we do have the Justice Center and relatively new, but yet that building's now 20 plus years old. And we need to be looking there at, at some of those issues and make, make sure that we maintain that in, in a, in a good working condition and for our taxpayers and that we don't end up needing major repairs suddenly that, or even repairs, repair work that would endanger the public as they're in that building.
For you, John, on the building, building maintenance future?
It's something, the courthouse, just like Chad was saying, the courthouse is a central location to Newcastle, to Henry County. It's a beautiful building. We do need to look and we need to maintain and fix stuff. But just like you were saying, what can we fix right now? What can we, what can we not fix? But you're going to hear a lot from me. We've got to be able to sustain. If it's something we do now, we can't put stuff off, but it's got to be sustainable. Just like Jay was talking with the Justice Center, beautiful building. We need to, to save back and pocket. So everything's sustainable in the future. I, I don't want to go in and start something if it can't continue. It, you're just, you're, you're wasting, wasting money. If you were to build a house and you planned on your future there, you're going to maintain it. You're going to take care of it because you're hoping to have your children there, your grandchildren there. And that's something that we need to look at and that we do need to maintain. I think, I, I think right now, I think we're a few years behind. It probably should have been started sooner. But I'm glad someone is doing it. Delaware County, they tore down their, their courthouse. And a lot of people, you see pictures on Facebook all the time. We shouldn't have ever done it. We should have kept it as a beautiful building. And the history needs to stay for our children, our grandchildren. That way they can see it. There's nothing better than Jay, you serving hot dogs on the courthouse lawn every year. That's an enjoyable time for families and everything.
Well, I mean, it's, it's important that we raise taxes so the Republicans can have their hot dog fun.
It's coming up, you know.
That is, that is, that is a key part of the calendar.
We're just going to raise the prices.
August 23rd, he got the plug in.
I got your plug for you.
Any party or any group could, you know.
And I was there last year. I had a great time. I was disappointed. It was the one event that Diego Morales, the Secretary of State, did not eat a bratwurst at. I was, I showed up and I was hoping, hoping he would be there, but he just wasn't. All right, Dakota, you, I'll let you carry the show for a moment.
We'll just keep on going with, with John. Let's go into this conversation with the county insurance. We just saw kind of an update in the, in the Courier Times based on the last meeting where they were, the county council was going to have to start making some tough decisions on where they're going to find money from for the increased insurance premiums that they have. And then they also talked about keeping money behind for future lawsuits that could be happening. So tell me your thoughts on it and the whole situation.
The big, there is an increase in the premiums, but they're also, and people don't always think about it, is an increase in deductible from 50,000 to 150,000.
25 actually.
Yeah.
I do, well, 25.
Oh, is it 25? Okay. So right now with 10 tort claims, they're looking at $1.5 million just in tort claims.
If they all pay out.
If they all pay out, not saying they were, but you all, you have to be prepared. You have to have that savings account. You've got to have, be prepared. Putting back for it, I am okay with if the, if you're not robbing Peter to pay Paul. If you're able to put money back and you're not decreasing other things, I, I'm firmly agree with it. Cause you never know when something's going to happen. You're going to have frivolous cases. You're going to have some with merit. You just have to be prepared for those and saving back a little bit of money is, is not a bad thing.
Jay, your thoughts on, on the, I guess, the potential exposure for, for these, with the new insurance program?
Well, I think the exposure that Henry County had now is huge, obviously, and is a huge financial risk that the county council and the commissioners are going to have to take. Times have changed in the insurance world tremendously. Throughout my career as a county employee, I've seen huge differences. Going from a $25,000 deductible to $150,000 deductible could be devastating to a county budget and to the commissioner's budget for law and thing that they have for that, along with what the county council has to do. And they have to be creative in a way to find out how to finance that. Putting some money back for the future, the big what if something else happens, I think is going to be necessary in that case. To find $25,000 because a, another tort notice or lawsuit popped up, it is feasible, could, could be very feasible in the budget where it is today, or even fairly simple to do. I believe it's something that they could have done. But you get one or two at $150,000 deductibles. That, that's gonna, that's going to start pulling from other budgets. They're going to have to start skimming the top. I think there's probably only two departmental budgets big enough that you could really start to pull from. And that would be the commissioner's budget or the sheriff's budget. I think the other budgets within the county, I just don't see where there would be room to start pulling off the top of those budgets to finance torts.
From your history in the sheriff, with your sheriff's department background, and I know a lot of this conversation has been driven, at least a number of these tort claims are associated with the sheriff's department. Is there anything the council can do to influence or work with the sheriff's department to reduce that exposure?
Yeah. I think just simply reducing the exposure, good training for the officers from the, from very top down to the, to even the cooking staff at the jail. Having, having good solid base training. Those insurance companies offer that. You know, I know many times in the past, travelers would send out flyers and we would attend different trainings to help us reduce our liability. You know, we were driven to build a new jail by a class action lawsuit. We had to take a look at what we were doing within the jail and the liabilities there. And make some changes in how we operate. And one, and one of those big changes obviously was operating a new jail, a bigger, more modern jail.
So Mr. Numbers Guy?
Well.
You have an insurance background? You've got a county council background? So how do you solve it?
I, I think it's, you have to work at it from all angles. I think, I mean, I worked for McGowan for several years and McGowan is the county's insurance. And I have to say that I know Josh Estle personally, and I can't imagine the heaven and earth he moved to get the county where he is. He does a phenomenal job at that stuff. Smartest guy I've ever met to do in insurance. The, the problem lies in a lot of different things. I think society has changed and you can sue over anything anymore for any reason. And it's real popular. The scary thing, I, I agree with both my colleague candidates here, that the scary thing is this deductible thing, because it's really easy to settle for the deductible because it costs the insurance company nothing. Yeah. So.
And they decide, the insurance company is the agent to decide what it's going to be.
And if you decide not to take their deductible, then you have the potential liability that won't cover your claim. If you decide not to take the, it's a settlement offer, you know, not to agree to the agreed settlement offer. So there's, there's lots of potential there. I think Jay hit on a good point of training. I think there are some things you can do to mitigate your, your damages as far as insurance premiums is, you know, if you have better training, if you do some of these things to go through. I think it's just going to be that you have to watch, watch what you're doing and make sure everybody understands the potential liability that county has. As for the numbers, it's tough. I mean, the county's rainy day fund has just north of $200,000 in it. That's, rain's pretty hard at $150,000 a hit. So that, that doesn't last very long. You know, so it's going to take some very good maneuvering. But there's all, the county is constantly maneuvering with the way things are. And, and with the liabilities that would get set on us from the state level, it makes it very difficult. I mean, the state, and I've said this on many times and everywhere, the, the state has tied our hands in many cases. I think, you know, just like the teachers all banded together. I mean, maybe we won't steal red, we'll do blue shirts or something and I'll just go down to the state house. Cause the state is sitting down there flush with cash and we're scraping together two pennies to make sure we can pay the electric bill at times. I mean, when I started on the council, I came into the council, we were $800,000 in the hole. They had to borrow money to pay the last payroll right before I took off, was sworn into office. They borrowed money from the surveyor's ditch fund to pay the bills and pay the payroll and pay the insurance. There was no money left. When I left, there was $2 million. But that was falsely inflated from some CARES Act money and some other things. I mean, there, we were definitely in a much better position, but it would not have been 2 million. It would have probably been maybe 800, maybe a million or give or take at that point. But so, I mean, the county operates, like Jay said, on a very thin budget. There are departments that they don't have, there's nothing, it's what we, what is in most county budgets is people and paper. That's it.
There's nothing to trim, right?
There is no.
Unless you're, unless you're getting rid of headcount.
Exactly.
So a real quick question I want to ask here, and then we can go back to Dakota, but you were talking about, okay, $200,000 in rainy day fund. I know the commissioners are selling or have sold this building just north of us that there was a hotel or it's going to be a hotel, which is the, I think it's called the courthouse annex. There is the property in front of Walmart that we talked about with commissioner candidates last week. If those sell, is that money then able to be allocated by the county council and do what you want with it? Or is that commissioners? If those sell, is that money then able to be allocated by the county council and do what you want with it? Or is that commissioner's money? How does, what happens? Say you get a building that sells for 200,000 and 1,300, you have a half million dollars there. Is that your rainy day fund or does that do something else?
That's, that's what your elected officials get to decide. I mean, in theory.
Which elected officials?
Well, it's the council, since they are the financial body, should have some influence to that decision. You know, it would be great to set up a non-reverting fund that those funds go into to use for, you know, or. Just set them up where those go into the insurance non-reverting fund because that can be done by, you know, resolution from the council. We can set up non-reverting funds. We did it several times. We set up the one for the park board to hold, you know, when they, they get to keep their. Firewood and fees now and things that they can utilize. So it's very simple process and government process to do. But obviously the commissioners are going to have influence. I'm not sure the extent of the money theirs are going to bring in. You know, as much as the potential liability that we get rid of. I mean, the Walmart lot is probably a, you know, a decent offering for someone, but. The annex building over here, I, what did they sell it for the first time? 20,000 to 25,000? It was a pretty minimal amount of money in the grand scheme of things.
Any, any comments on how to use building sale funds for either Jay or John?
I, I just think that if the county decides to sell the property which they have, I, I just think it's important that. They be transparent with where that money goes and that. It is used to further some other project, property project or maintain the property that Henry County already has.
Yeah, the money definitely. And whether you split it or whatever, but some does need to be set back for the insurance issue. That's one, that's probably the biggest thing is we're facing coming in to this next year. But we need to work with the commissioners and come up with a solution to put that money. To use.
All right. So speaking about money, Henry County got $9 million in American Rescue Plan funds. We just want to talk a little bit about how that whole process was and. What your guys thoughts on how it's been spent?
If you were on the council and got to spend it, what would have happened?
Whoever wants to start with that one will.
I'll start since I was on the council if that works. So I was disappointed at the way that worked, to be honest, because at, at first. It was seemed as though we were all, all 10 of us were going to get involved. And then it got whittled down to just a couple of the council and a couple of commissioners. And then. It seemed like the commissioners just took with it and ran with it. My, and I said this early on, I said, as soon as we got it, I said in the initial meetings when we were getting it. We can't just use this money to pay bills. This is something we will probably never, ever see again, at least in our lifetimes. So we need to invest in something that brings us people, brings us, because. The real way to get tax revenue is to bring belly buttons to the community, not raise the taxes the people is already here. Because we are one of the, we are the, one of the oldest and one of the poorest counties in the state of Indiana. So raising our taxes is not going to continue to help us bring in more. Yes, it's going to bring in more money, but it's not going to, it's not going to help the community grow. We need to grow the community and then. We'll grow the tax base by the additional housing, by the additional revenue from the sales tax that we'll get into our lit, or not sales tax. The income tax that we'll get into our lists, the extra food and beverage money that will come through and flow through. I mean. That's the real way to grow the community is to grow people. So I threw out a suggestion, hey, let's, let's figure out a way to work with the RDC, to work with the EDC. Let's grow like a housing addition. Let's, you know, incentivize something like a builder to come in. We'll do the infrastructure with some of this money. I spoke with the mayor about it actually because he, you know, he was dreaming the sports complex. There, there were community owned, property owners who have. Properties right out there along 103 that would make a phenomenal housing addition in that area. And that were interested, but it just kind of went away and it. I'm a little disappointed that the majority of that money has basically just been used to pay the bills.
You know, it would help around about at 300 South and 103.
I'm not loving that. I just come back. We were over there in Indy this weekend at the RHB. I don't want to, I, I, I would not vote for that one. I'll go on record and say I will vote against all roundabouts.
Thankfully that's in dots. It's not, it's not up to this county council. I don't think they make you pay for your roundabouts. Jay, let's hear from you on the, on the, I guess Chad, you, you mentioned earlier, so I want to come back to it. There are some of the ARP funds that are going to go to these buildings as well.
That is my understanding from that work session meeting is that the, a huge chunk of the balance that is left. Is going to go to that, to, to these renovations.
All right, cool. So Jay. Reset the clock, $9 million. You're, you're sitting on the county council. What would your priorities have been? I think this is an opportunity for us to look and see if you're on the council now and we fall into money. What's, what's your priority list?
Well, one of my top priorities, and, and we'll get to that a little bit later in the day for King of the Day, though, I, I feel. As Chad mentioned, you know, bodies in our community are important. And taking care of the bodies that are in our community are just important. And, and I think that a, that the need for. You know. Substance abuse and mental health and even adequate housing all comes under that. And I think that that should be a huge portion of what this money goes to. Yes, we need to take care of, like I mentioned earlier, those buildings that we have and the investment in property that we have here in Henry County already. But if we're doing that all along, like we would our own homes, things like that, then we're not going to have those huge outlays of money. Building a place where we can help the people in our community that need the help. Becomes very important and keeping those bodies and those people here in Henry County healthy.
All right. And Mr. John Phillips?
I, I agree. Money should not have been used just to pay bills. It, it needs to be invested in us. Mental health, the homelessness. We need to, we need to invest in the citizens of Henry County. I was just looking, the suicide rate for Henry County was 19.4%. That, that's, it's way too high. Now that's per 100,000 people, so it's not 19.4% of our citizens, but.
19 out of every 100,000.
Yes, yes, but that's still high. We were ranked number 68 out of 92 counties. That, that's too high and that goes back to the mental, just like Jay was saying. We need to invest in something to help those, those citizens out. It's going to help us in the long run still attract, like Chad said, belly buttons into the county. If you've got happy citizens, you're taking care of your citizens, it's going to bring more people in. Your, your biggest counties right now in central Indiana, the citizens are happy. You go there, people are hefty, it shows. And we need to bring, sorry about that. We need to bring that to Henry County is, is we need to invest. We need to offer the right things for the people.
All right. There's this conversation that started, we talked last week with the commissioner candidates. And Commissioner, current Commissioner Plummer said that in April, they're going to have this meeting that kind of kicks off the exploration of. Expansion, so adding an additional pod to the detention center or county jail as it's commonly known. Is that, John, something that you think is, it's time to move forward with that? There's, there's kind of two arguments. One. Do we really need a larger filing cabinet for more people? But also. Do it now because the construction costs are going to go up. And if we don't do something now, then it's just going to cost us more later. What's that look like in your view and, and how would you like to play this?
Don't let the past repeat itself. We've already dealt with that with our old jail. We need to get on top of it now before we end up in a situation. Now the new jail is nicer, so you're not going to have issues with that. But we need to get on top of it now. If there's a way to do it and we can find the money, we, we need to do it.
All right. Jay, you've got 30 some years in the sheriff's department. Your views on, is it time to expand, add the additional pod? And how do we pay for it if we do?
I, I believe definitely it's time to, to expand. And that's just not wishful thinking. That comes from those years of experience that I have there. Going back 38 plus years there, was an administrator for the last 24 years of my career. And went through the build of the new jail and with Sheriff McCorkle's liaison to the construction company as we went through that. But if you go back into 2017, 2018, when we had the community planning that, and we had some studies built that how big of a jail do we need? They told us back then that we needed by 2030 a jail that would house 300 plus inmates. Well, right now I believe the current jail is in the 240 range, 260 range. I'm kind of drawing a blank there at that point. But 300 plus inmates, you know, our courts have been using from that time period when we were so overcrowded in the old jail. Our courts already started using all the, the programs that were available to them to reduce our population. And, and, and keeping the community safe by keeping those who. The prosecutor's office and the judges feel need to be locked up. You know, they, they still have in place some of the programs that help reduce those numbers.
The, the counterargument to that, that I've been hearing, as I, because we've talked through the, through the time of this show is that we've had, there's. Less than 40, less than 50 people that are actually serving sentences that are in the jail now. So they're just not through the system, right? They're not sentenced to sit in Henry County, but they just haven't found a way to trial yet. They haven't found. You know, they haven't gotten to the end of the process. Is that, but we, you would think that we would anticipate that that's not going to go away.
That's not going to go away. The biggest problem that we ran into. A few years back, just a few years back was those, the, you know, the courts would release people. And then the vast majority of the people that we found that we were holding again were back in on violations of their releases. And so they had continued to violate or violate again while they already had received a release from the court.
They got out once and then something happened and now you have to hold them.
Correct, correct. I, I remember one time I, I did a survey for, I believe it was the Circuit Court Two judge. He wanted to know how many people that day were back in a second time from a release from his court specifically. And that number was 20 that day. Had been released through Superior or Circuit Court Two, and then they were back in. For violating their terms of release.
So on that particular day for his court, 20 of the people in the jail were because they had something happened again.
Correct.
All right. Chad, what, what do we say?
Well, as someone.
The paint is almost dry on the new pod, on the current pod.
So as someone who received a subpoena from Ken Falk. To a deposition over all this from the ACLU, I don't want to receive that again because that is a pucker factor that does kind of knock you off your feet. So it, it was always discussed that this was going to add in. When we passed the lit tax or the public safety lit tax. To do build the jail tax, when we passed this tax, it was, we stretched every penny. I mean, this guy over here was carrying desks from the old jail to the new one. Because we didn't buy all new furniture. We made every penny work. We squeezed, we managed to get the JCAP program. Which I, you know, Jay's already brought up is something that is helpful.
Help people understand what JCAP stands for. We like acronyms.
And I can't remember the exact part of the acronym, but it's the. Jail Chemical Addiction Program, I think it is. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it works with those addicted inmates because. Talk to any sheriff's deputy, talk to any sheriff, talk to anybody who's worked in law enforcement. The by and far majority of the inmates at the Henry County Detention Center are, have addiction problems, addiction or mental health issues. The by and far majority. It makes, I think rec utilities like 85% or more are that way. And so trying to address the roots of the problem is a, and I know there are several. Community organizations, Hagar's Hope is opening a new women's transition center. Here, which is thrilling. So I've been working with them a little bit. And so anybody's interested in that. You know, get with me. I'd love to put you in touch with them. They'd, you know, they'll have all the help they can get.
Is that Jamie Owens?
Sorry?
Is that Jamie Owens?
Yes, it is. It's Jamie. So they're actually, you know, looking to put a women's transition right here in the Bennett's house. So it's going to be, it's going to be a great program. I think addressing some of those programs will be a really great start. But the numbers plan was the Justice Center bond fell off this year. So the bond on what they bonded to build the Justice Center is now off. So. I haven't ran the numbers with Baker Tilly in a couple of years. But that was always, you know, kind of in the back of the heads of when we were doing this two years ago. That this would bond was going to come up in two years. And that is some potential revenue stream to make this happen.
We have an idea how much it's going to cost?
Well, if we would have been able to do it at the time, it was about half what it is now. I think it's.
Almost double.
It's, it's like 12, 13, 14 million. It's gone up exponentially. Because so many of these facilities are keep getting built and it's, you have a very few that actually build because. You, they actually build the cells. And then they're put inside the buildings. It's, it's not like you build.
Modular system.
It's a modular type scenario and there are very few of those manufacturers out there.
Essentially a proprietary precast system.
It is. And so it's all in one, all inclusive, getting a behind the scenes look. I've been behind the scenes in Delaware County. I've been behind the scenes and. It's weird because you're walking in a pole, they're working just in like pole barn. That they stick a bunch of cells into and you're walking behind them in a pole barn and there's inmates on the other side. It's, it's a very strange setup, but it is the most economical and the best way to build jail facilities nowadays. And so that's, that, that twofold, one, they're, they can, they're expensive, but two, they're also way out on their lead time. So it's something you have to plan for.
And I think to add to that, not only are they looking to build cells or add additional cells in this pod. But part of my understanding from what they're requesting and what, what Sheriff Sprouse is requesting in this pod is, is to add on to the educational. Portion of that educational wing of that. The JCAP wing is there now is terribly undersized unfortunately for, for what the need is in Henry County. And what the need is with 330 inmates in there. They, they need a significant amount of. Greater or greater amount of educational space. One classroom and one office just isn't enough for the people that are seeking. To get into that course.
I think it's only, Jay reminded me, it's only about a dozen, space for a dozen or so people, right? In the program, which is.
I believe it's 16 males and a dozen women.
And if I remember right, they're talking about a mental health wing as well, has, has been discussed.
And I've not heard that discussion, but that just makes my day as a former employee there. And having served as the jail commander there four times because unfortunately in the state of Indiana, jails have become the holding. Space for those with mental illnesses, with the closing of all the state hospitals and such around through the state. The jails and the sheriff's office have, have been strapped with holding those that are mentally ill. And we're not equipped for that. We're not equipped for it. We're not mental health counselors. We're correctional officers or police officers. Do we have some training in that? Absolutely. But. That, that takes some highly specialized training and, and education to effectively deal with those with mental health issues.
So John, you mentioned about homelessness. And what, what do you think the role for the county government or the council, I guess, would, would be in addressing the homeless issue? Because we've been seeing, we've seen a lot of stuff in the Courier Times recently with the Henry Township trustee. Dealing, trying to deal with the homeless. Issue in, in the city of Newcastle. So do you think that the, the county government has a, a role to play in that?
We're going to have to. We're, we're going to have to. I mean, they're, they're passing the ordinance where no camping on city property. I don't know if camping's ever been defined. By chance, is that sleeping, sleeping with a tent? What is that exactly?
The ordinance pretty well says a fly or a fly tent.
Yeah.
And it's going to go away.
But i, i, if they can't find a place, they're going to move on the outskirts and it's going to come down to us. We need to help them if we can. Travis at the township assessor, he had people move in. It didn't work out, whatever the city scene, but there. But some of that ARP funds, it would be great, just like we discussed, to, to help out the homelessness. You know, we might not know them, but they're someone's mom, dad, brother, sister, aunt, uncle.
And right now there, there's not, it's not like there's a huge amount.
Correct. There's not. And that's why if we start now, maybe we can help alleviate from getting more. Times are tough. Stuff's expensive. Just a few days ago in the paper or wherever I seen it, it's going to cost a family of four an extra $12,000 a year. Based on everything, if it was the same as last year, 12,000 extra dollars a year. That's going to affect a lot of people. I'm not made of money. None of us are. If we can help out, if we can find a way, if we can take some of that ARP funds, if we can. Just help out one way or another. I, I wish I had the answer because. Everybody would love me, but I don't have the answer right now. But we need to look into it and it's going to fall. In our laps at some point, maybe not 100%. We're going to have to deal with it.
Chad, I don't think we've heard from you in the most amount of time here. So the hot potato to you on, on how the, how the town, the county handles. I guess Henry Township and homelessness.
Unfortunately, there's no, nothing in the general fund budget that would address something like that. But the. Where the county I think could be involved is being a partner in getting to. in getting together and with other community organizations and working with the grant writers and things. I mean, there are potential funds through, you know, like the opioid grant through their, through the ARPA funds. There are potential grant monies that have a ton more flexibility. I mean, the food and beverage is another potential as an option to look. I mean, you know, we, we have a ton, the council has a ton of flexibility when it comes to that. The commissioners have a ton of flexibility when it comes to the grants. Unfortunately, there's really nothing baked into the general fund budget. I mean, I think that falls more on the township trustees and the township trustees throughout the county, whether it's Henry Township or all of them. Um, that's really where our tax dollars go to help those in, in that situation.
Traditionally speaking, the township trustees office is responsible for what they've always called poor relief.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah. So that is, that's, that has been the ways Indiana has been structured, um, for a long time now. I mean, there was some talk of doing away with township trustees. It's actually gone to the legislature a couple of times. Uh, it's gotten not a ton of traction. But I mean, so right now there's nothing in the traditional county budget that could you be utilized to address that. Um, but that doesn't mean that the county shouldn't partner and they shouldn't potentially look at some of their grants and get involved. I mean, the more people we can get in a room and work together, the better off we're going to be.
And I agree with that. Uh, I was in a conversation at a local restaurant the other day and somebody asked me what I thought about this little bit of homelessness and the issues that you're having over here at the old Y. And, and I thought, you know, they, they said, well, that, that's Henry Township trustees problem and Newcastle problem. It's not a county issue. And I said, yeah, it is. There's still Henry County residents. They're living here in Henry County. Newcastle and Henry Township is in the heart of Henry County and that makes it our issue to deal with. And so many of the homeless, and I'm not putting it out on just one person. I'm not saying any of them even fit this stereotype that I'm going to talk about, but many, many of the homeless either have substance abuse or mental health issues or both sometimes. And so that's where starting to tackle some of those other issues here in Henry County will, will benefit the community as a whole, and especially those that may be born.
All right. The, um, I hate talking about that issue. It is, it's incredibly important, but it's incredibly depressing, right? And I, I think, and we talked about this last week with commissioner candidates, that it's not a new issue, but it became a very visible issue in the community this winter with the Henry Township, uh, essentially creating a shelter, being told, hey, you can't have a shelter. And then tents appeared downtown and everybody goes, oh, now it's in front of us and we're, it's, it's been a very real discussion and conversation.
The state came in and told the, the trustee, no.
I think there's also some insurance issue.
There were some insurance issues. There were some city, city building inspector compliance issues.
Yeah. To be kind of frank, he opened a homeless shelter without going through any of the bureaucratic red tape of opening a homeless shelter. I don't think he had, I don't think he had a health cert, a health department certificate for serving the food. He didn't have insurance to have people living there. And so I think there's hoops that had to be jumped through. And I think ultimately his board told him, this isn't something that we do. Like we have money to put people in hotels. We do not have a, a system to create and open a homeless shelter. So.
Well, that, I mean, that's something for the candidates here to talk about. Like, I mean, not everything that the county council, that a county council member does has to just deal with the money. It, you, you have connections in that role to where you can go. Okay. So what, what do you need to do? And then you can come up, you can talk to people and come up with a list of things and try to figure it out.
As Chad said, that's a collaboration with, uh, your nonprofits in Henry County and your other organizations, the township trustees and those that have that responsibility.
Let's make it easier for you to, to cross this red tape by me. I can help you contact people. I mean, that, just that is enough, you know, like-
We have an amazing group of very involved, very influential citizens in this community that are always willing to lend a hand. And that's where I think creating something like that is, is the first step in coming up with a real solution that will last long-term.
So Jay, let's, let's move on and start with, start with you. The, uh, the county has been working on building, uh, or is, is the landlord, I guess, for the Henry County Expo Center project. And this is, I think, been an issue for about the last five years now, as we, maybe longer, um, as, as we've been having this, these discussions.
Since this podcast has been started here.
I don't know how long the expos existed. The, the topic is probably 10 years old now at this point.
Sure.
But we've got a essentially a, the shell of a building that's on county property that has a lease that has somewhere in the 60 plus range, 65 years left to go to run out on it. I got a feeling at some point the county council is going to have to, or the county is going to be asked to get involved. If you're sitting on the county council and expo project becomes the county's issue, what's, what's your response?
Well, Jeremiah, I think you know a little bit about my background. You and I both served together on Purdue extension board and the 4H association. And so obviously I have a lot of partiality to, to that building and the Henry County Expo Center being run by that group. However, we've got an unfinished building out there on Henry County property and that's frustrating for all. Um, you know, a, as we look at, at that unfinished shell of a building out there, starts out to be a beautiful building, but we're, we're hundreds and hundreds of thousands, probably millions of dollars away from completing that project. And, uh, sometimes I think we got the cart before the horse a little bit to, to use that agriculture term a little, uh, as we started that program. A huge supporter of it though. And someday, because it is on county property, I think Henry County is probably going to have to step up and manage or manage the completion of that building, if not the operation of that building, uh, for, for the 4H and for Purdue extension.
All right. Um, Chad, thoughts on, on the project? I know you, you and I served on the memorial park board together. So we were on the very front end of a previous version of this project ourselves.
We were. We served on the park board together when this kicked off. I served on the council throughout the project and was one of the council members who voted to approve giving them 1.2 million dollars. Um, stood there when they all said, this will be, we'll never come back. This will get us done. Um, as much as I really respect and admire the person that was kind of cheerleading everything at the time, their slogan was dream big. I think they dreamed too big. Um, and had they done it and what was originally planned? Well, when we actually met out at Sproul's school and did the initial meeting and had everything out there and the original plans, and it was to build the, a 4H barns and to build the 4H center, not an expo center. And that was the original plan. I think if that had been done, this wouldn't be a topic of good discussion. That building would have been long since done. Someone asked me the other day, what's the perfect solution? Some may not like my thought, but I would bring in an engineer and I'd say, this is what we got. We need some 4H buildings. We need a 4H barn. We need, we need this for our kids in this community. Do we need an expo center? I, in my past life, I travel a lot and I went to a lot of conferences. I will tell you that I never went to a single conference where I couldn't walk from the hotel room to the conference. We do not have the infrastructure to provide a large conference center in Henry County at this point. The cart before the horse, as Jay said, is very appropriate because I, you know, the, the old field of dreams, build it and they will come. Maybe there's a good, I hadn't seen that movie either, but.
Get, sign up for the paper on folks. You'll get, you get the whole story.
Scoop. Yeah. But no. So I mean, I, I don't know that that would necessarily work in this case. And so I, I, if, if we have to get back involved, I think we need to get back involved at the core level. And I think we need to get back to the basics and we need to, this is what we got. What can we do? Can we blow the roof out in a certain area? Can we, you know, what can we do to take the building we have and turn it into what we truly need to serve the community as it stands?
John Phillips? Definitely a cart before the horse. Uh, I agree. 4H, it needs to come first in that. They, they need the barns and everything. Uh, the 1.2 million dollars that the county gave to them, that wouldn't even right now bring water into that building. And that's the issue. Just like you said, the infrastructure is not there to maintain an expo center, nor will it probably ever be there. Um, you, you say if the county has to, they're going to have to get involved. The county's going to at some point. I don't even know if any of the board members from the expo center are still on the board. Does anybody know that? From what I looked, I don't know. There's been a lot of turnover, but I think there are still some original. There's still some original. I don't see it getting completed without the county stepping in, but just like you said, it, it's an expo center. We don't have the right area for that at this time. Um, I mean, if you think downtown Indianapolis, you got the hotels, you can walk to it. The vendors can come and go as they please. Here they're going to have to load up their cars every night and, and go to a hotel.
And even with the saddle club that's out there, a very successful venture there and here in Henry County.
It's huge.
Majority of the people that go to the saddle club events stay in hotels outside of Henry County.
I, I am a big supporter.
Anderson and Greenfield.
A big supporter of the saddle club. I've been a member of it for years. My, my wife showed horses. My, my daughter shows horses. Um, I've been very involved with the saddle club. Uh, and you're right. Even when the talk of a hotel was coming to the city, I spoke up and said, it's, it's going to have to be somewhere where you can fit large trucks and you can't just have a small parking lot. When they were talking to building it on three, it's not going to be big enough. Uh, a lot of those people stay in Greenfield, Muncie, Anderson, and they'll drive 45 minutes. And, and there's literally, there's people that drive 500,000 million dollar motorhomes that park and still go sleep in a hotel room. It's, I don't understand why, but that's just the way they are. And that expo center up there without a hotel or anything close, I don't see it being feasible to, to stay or up and running.
They, they probably stay in hotels for the free breakfast.
That, gotta love the free breakfast. But I, I'm a, I support 4H a hundred percent. My wife's been a 4H leader for years. Um, I, I think we need to see if we can convert it to a 4H grounds, uh, and, and have your cattle shows, your pig shows and so forth. Uh, it'd be nice that it's not too far from the current, uh, place that they're showing. But we all know that the, those arenas over there, they've reached their time. Um, and it's, the kids deserve to have somewhere nice that they don't have to worry about getting electrocuted because they're, they're filling their water bucket. Um, county's going to have to get involved at some point to put the horse back in front of the cart. The infrastructure needs to be looked at before anything else can be looked at. Can the water be brought up there? Can the sewage, can it handle? Uh, the pipes from the saddle club, they're not large enough to, to run off and, and run off the, uh, expo off the saddle club. So it's going to be a million dollars plus just to run water to that, to that area at this time.
Let's keep, uh, let's keep going with you, John.
Yep.
So, uh, first of all, tell me your top priorities in, uh, in the term, if you get elected.
Right now, being a newbie, these guys have a lot more experience than me, Jay, with the sheriff's department. Chad, you've serving. Um, I need to get my feet wet. From what I see currently, we've discussed the insurance. That has to be a type, top priority because 10 tort claims, five court, uh, tort claims, uh, can put the county in financial ruin just that quick. Um, and that's just paying the deductible, not counting the, the extra money that we're spending on our, uh, policy right now. Um, I want to maintain and continue to grow. The, uh, I also want to bring in all the county, all of the county, Knightstown, Middletown. Um, we need to come together as a team and discuss stuff. Um, town boards and stuff are great. We need to meet with them and see if there's anything we can do to help and vice versa. Is there a way to help each town? Henry County will not grow without their help. If, if Middletown and Knightstown, um, we're not on the same page because it's just going to help them out too. Their, their taxes- Those western county towns are the most likely to be growing as Indianapolis grows this way, right? At this right now, yes. The western, uh, western towns, uh, are going to be the first to grow. Um.
You know, last week, one day I was, uh, traveling into Pendleton about four 30 in the evening and, and the amount of traffic between I-69 and the west of the Pendleton had Pendleton gridlocked.
Yep.
You know, quite honestly.
It's insane.
And, you know, at, at this intersection of 67, at the 67 and 36 and 38, you know, that, that traffic was splitting off those two directions. And I would say probably 75% of that was headed east. Well, it's not that far from the east edge of Pendleton to the western edge of Henry County.
No, it's not at all.
You're talking Middletown, uh,
Muckville.
Muckville. You know, although that's Madison County, it's still, it's just, just-
It's right there.
A mile from Henry County.
So close, you can almost taste the tax base, Jay.
They're absolute.
But you're right. From 109 east, they've got, it's, it's, I mean, there's quite a few houses on, on 38 there, but once you get into Henry County, you've got plenty of land to, to sell out, to, to add additions to, um, so forth like that. That's going to be where the main growth is.
It won't if you put solar farms and wind farms out there though.
And you look at, look at the, uh,
We made it.
What, what it just costs to buy-
Sixty-five minutes.
What it just costs to buy property in western Henry County right now. You know, I, I was, I was, I was absolutely amazed at what my youngest daughter bought some property a couple of years ago out in the Caddis area and what she had to pay for that property in that four and a half acres that they bought. It's just amazing what that, that cost.
And you cross that Madison County line, it doubles in price. It's crazy how, how much property is just going towards that much closer to Pendleton. It's almost double the price. So monarch for the day, Mr., uh, Mr. John. We, we last week realized we couldn't be king for the day because there were, we had, we had, uh, the commissioner candidates were, uh, would not make good kings. So we went monarch for the day. That was, that was the decision we made. So if you're monarch for the day, John Phillips, what are you doing?
Oh, I wish I had an answer.
Fix one thing as a county council person. You don't have to ask anybody else's opinion. You stroke of a pen, executive monarch's order, what are we fixing?
We would have an unlimited budget.
There we go.
Unlimited budget.
Hundred percent tax rate.
Answer all. That, that would solve all problems for the county right now.
Literally a king.
Literally a king.
Literally a king. All right. Let's, uh, let's, let's work over to Jay. Um, your top, your top priorities and the monarch for the day question. I know you've been looking forward to.
I have monarch for the day. I've mentioned it two or three other times. The health, safety and wellbeing of our citizens is foremost. And, and I would build a building here in Henry County in Newcastle, wherever we needed to put that building that could house substance abuse, that could house substance abuse, could house mental, those with mental health issues and, and help solve our, our housing issues too.
Yeah.
You could, you could put a dormitory housing style living there, you know, whether that is the old seventh grade building or Bennett house or, or a series of buildings. I think it's important that we take care of the health, safety and wellbeing of every citizen here in Henry County.
Yep. All right. Chad Mallico, top priority for the next four years and you're the king.
All right. So my top priority would, uh, be to get a good handle on our budget. We've got to get back to the basics on it. Um, and you know, raising taxes is not a solution in my opinion. It's growing the community and growing the budget naturally by bringing people here who bring their money here. And so that is what I want to get to. Um, you know, the, the king for a day, I would capture power back from the state. The counties and the cities and municipalities have so much of their power and authority and things taken from them over these past decade, which has made the state flourish, but it has made the county struggle. And by doing that, it would help my main priority because we get, if just the gas, go look at the gas tax and how much we used to get from the gas tax when it first passed versus today. And then complain about the 800 miles of road that we don't have the money to pay because we have the money to pay them every, uh, uh, three times as often as we need to.
They, they come down and fill potholes in my road every single year. And every year they pop right back up right after the winter.
It's, that's a tough one, but that's, that's my king for a day. I would steal back some of what the state has taken away from us over the past couple of decades.
All right. Well, let's, let's work our way into final thoughts. Uh, we're going to start with you, Jay. Um, your opportunity to tell folks how to volunteer for the campaign, raising money, maybe you need some new signs. Um, maybe you need, maybe you need some walking materials. People want to volunteer. How do they get involved with that? And any closing thoughts, things we forgot to talk about?
Well, first of all, thank you for this opportunity. Again, I appreciate that. Uh, my, my campaign is very grassroots. This is a very minimal campaign. Having run a larger campaign a couple of years ago, uh, it, it's almost scary, the difference in, in the, the pace of this campaign. Uh, I, I kept looking around and said, what am I missing? You know, as, as I looked around and, and that's no discredit to what we all are doing. Uh, but it is a different pace of the campaign, campaign and, and the level of spending is totally different. Help buying signs, buying some new signs. Uh, you know, still it's a lot of money. Uh, just the cost increase in, in signs from two years ago, I, I was shocked at that. Uh, just the cost increase in, in signs from two years ago, I, I was shocked at that. Uh, almost doubling cost to, to buy a hundred signs compared to what I paid two years ago for signs.
Yeah, I, I know a gentleman who is running, uh, I work with a gentleman who's running in the same race as you guys. And he was talking to me about the signs and he was telling me what he paid. Oh my gosh. Back whenever I was working on Jeremiah's campaign for county council, it was a, it was a lot different animal.
Even though I got a deal on signs, I'm not running, so.
Well, as, as we mentioned earlier off the air, you know, I picked up one of Jeremiah's signs tonight. A lot of people know that I collect them. And, and I was fortunately able to add another sign to my collection tonight.
That's right.
And I've got signs all the way back to, uh, when Ruckel's house run, uh, many years ago for, uh, I believe the state senate.
There you go.
So.
The first one or the second one? John Ruckelhaus or his father?
This will be his father.
Oh my gosh.
John Senior.
That was like a hand painted sign, Jay.
You know, I, I do, I do have a couple of hand painted signs that belong to Bill Cronk.
There you go.
In my collection.
Might have to check the paint for lead. Did it have a paid for on it?
You know, I have to go back and look at it. Uh, maybe I'll send you a snapshot of that sign.
If our former producer, Chris Dayton, can get somebody fined from the grave, beyond the grave, uh, and get the Ruckelhaus campaign, a slap to the $500 fine for not having a paid for in 1973, I think that would make him happy. Happy anniversary today to Chris Dayton, by the way.
But just get ahold of me. Uh, I've got a Facebook page, Jay Davis for Henry County Council. And, uh, contact me via Messenger on that. And, uh, if you want to help, we've got a fundraising event coming up, uh, the first weekend of April. To help pay for some of these signs and then some of the handouts that we're going to use. And, uh, uh, all the details aren't worked out on that. We just started hitting that one up, uh, yesterday as a matter of fact. But again, uh, I've got an email address and contact me via email, uh, jadavisforhenrycountycouncil@gmail.com. And then, uh, you can look me up on Facebook as well and hit me up on Messenger. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Mallico, final thoughts?
Hey, again, guys, I appreciate it. I mean, it's always a blast when we get to have fun here. So, um, you know, I, I guess, I, I guess, you know, at this point, I, a lot of people know who I am. I'm going to bring back the same passion, the same dedication and the same tenacity that I had the last time on the council. You know, I'm ready to jump right back in where I left off, um, get back in there and get, you know, to the bottom of some of these issues. Cause we do have some big things facing us. And I, I've said this before, but I said a million times again. People get so involved in all these fully statewide races, all these gubernatorial debates and all these things that are going on. You have to realize it takes four people in this county to take your money. That's it. Four people. That's all it has to vote on for the council to pass a new tax. In the state, it takes, uh, in the federal government, way more people to get on the same page and agree. Here it takes four people to do it. So these races are extremely important. So the biggest way I've asked people to get involved is spread the word. I mean, I appreciate all the support I can get. Word of mouth is going to be the really the, I'm going with that as this because I believe that I have that. You know, I've got that recognition. I don't have, I mean, you're going to get what you got the last time. So I mean, that's, you know, that's what I would, that's what I know people expect of me to go back in there. That's why people ask me to run again. So, you know, if you felt like I did a good job last time, I'd truly appreciate your support and your vote come May, because it's going to be here before you know it.
We do remind the audience that there are seven names on the ballot, but you get to vote for up to three of them. And the top three vote getters are going to be the ones that move on to the fall. So you can vote for one, but you could also vote for three and that vote counts. You have to choose three different names, but those all count towards that final total. And then basically the top three move on, whatever, however that shakes out.
Yeah. And as far as getting ahold of me, I am on Facebook. Quick look up, um, you can, um, you know, Chad for HC council is at Gmail is my email. So I'm pretty easy to find. So, uh, reach out anytime.
All right. Producer Zach, we're on vacation next week and you're really going on vacation next week.
Yeah. It's exhausting. I haven't gone anywhere yet. So, um, I don't have much. The, the Newcastle tap was an interesting event. Obviously not my, my normal shtick. I don't drink, but it was, it was good people watching and a lot of people.
Got some root beers.
I got Ruby. I got one root beer. I wish they like filled my cup up. Like this is all I'm getting, man. Like I didn't pay for my tickets. I guess I can't complain, but it was a cool event. Jeremiah really should release the raw audio because it really took all the music out. If you know what the arts park looks like. The DGO setup under the canopy and it was just holding all the noise. And we were interviewing people like 10 feet from the speakers. And I was listening in earbuds. So I couldn't, I was like, I can't hear anything. So then to find out that technology just cleans all up. And I didn't have to worry about it that bad. It was.
I will, I will take the raw audio and put it out on Patreon tonight.
Yeah.
So I'll put the original audio back out on Patreon. So those guys, if you're an absolute animal and have to hear that audio, we could, we'll put that out.
I mean, the number of, uh, adjustments to sound I made was in the hundreds, I bet. I was constantly adjusting, trying to, because every time you change people or the mic position changes, it was a bit of a mess, but.
You got some recognition in the Courier Times for your effort, kind of.
Did I? Did I? Cause I didn't see my last name spelled correctly.
Zach Bertram?
Zach Bertram. Yeah, I had a teacher named Bertram. I'm Bertram. Um, but yeah, they did get a picture. It was, it was, I chat, I got to chat with some people. It's kind of a who's who there, but. So that was a cool event and glad, I'm thanks to, thanks to them for inviting us.
I thought you were leaving right after. Like we, we got done with the recording. I get, I, I gave you the backpack to bring the stuff back here. I thought you were immediately leaving.
No, here's a fun thing.
Saw you like an hour and a half later.
I got to talking.
What are you doing here?
I got to talk. Cause I know people like I get, it's a, it's a, this is a community. You hang around long enough. In my case, just over 40 years, you get to know people. So I was chatting with some people, um, chatting with, with Joe, uh, Lanzinger, who was, was here a couple of weeks ago. So yeah, I hung around and this is a fun thing. So we, we came to the studio, get our equipment and Dakota was like, yeah, we'll meet up and we'll walk over there. So we walk over there. I left my car here. Uh, Dakota's wife went to the thing and picked him up. I could have drove my car over there, but no, I had to walk with the backpack all the way back to the studio.
For his volunteer job.
For, for my volunteer job with other people's equipment that I didn't pay for in there. And just like, okay, I was like, I see how this is. Dakota got a ride to the studio and also from when he left the thing to wherever he was going. I'm just wandering.
Walked a whole three blocks across all of downtown Newcastle.
I liked Dakota.
From one end of downtown.
I liked Dakota. Did, I ran 10 miles that morning and then was on my feet doing that. So I, it was.
It was exhausting.
Was it a struggle to walk? No, but did it hurt?
Yeah.
Yes. Because I've been on my feet for like seven hours at that point.
What was crazy is like, I drank so much alcohol. So I, my recovery was nothing. I was not recovered at all on Sunday. Like the sleep didn't even matter. It was, uh, uh, Sunday was a brutal day.
I got up and ran five more.
Ridiculous.
To, to keep it moving. But so, yeah, that was, it was a fun event and I might try and get my wife there sometimes so she can have some fun, but yeah.
And she can pick you up.
I'll drive. I'm the perfect driver. I'm a great DD.
Yeah. He's, Zach's fun because he's not going to drink. He's just going to, he's just going to make sure we're all safe. John Phillips, we broke the rhythm with, uh, with, with talking to Zach there, but final thoughts from your side, how people can volunteer, contribute, uh, all, all the rest.
Well, uh, just like they said, thanks for having us on. I always enjoy coming to be with you guys. Right now, signs, um, was not prepared for signs and gave them almost all out today. In one day, uh, it's going to be an amazing thing to, to be able to get more signs. You can look me up, my Facebook page, just getting started. It's Jonathan Phillips for Henry County Council at large. It's still in the works right now. You can go to my personal Facebook page, uh, is just Jonathan Phillips. You can reach me anytime on my phone, my cell phone, and I'll give it over the air. I don't care. It's 765-730-4062.
I really thought he had to look at his phone.
No, I was. I was seeing if someone was calling me right now. No, but i- if you've got any questions, I've already received a, a couple of phone calls. Because they'd heard something from someone and, and wanted to verify with me. And I appreciate that. I'd rather you come to me and get the exact answer rather than listening to someone else. Just like Jeremiah was saying, you do get three votes. Do your research and vote for who you know. Don't cast three votes just because you think you have to, uh, but you know, vote for the three people you want. There's a lot of great guys running for this position. When I first filed, I had no clue that there were going to be seven people, but I'm glad there is. We're giving the citizens a choice. And that's a great thing in, in, uh, in the political system is by giving a choice. I'm glad it's just not three of us and, and you get who you get. Uh, I'm thankful to be running against Chad and, and Jay, uh, and all, all the rest of the guys. I really don't know the rest of them. But I'm very, I'm really looking forward to, to this election and I'm looking forward to hopefully working with two other, the gentleman running and, and being able to help Henry County out and do the best we can. We won't be able to solve all those, uh, problems, but we'll do our best. Uh, can mistakes be made? Yes, they are. But we're, we're going to make them right. We're going to do our best to, to make everything right and to push Henry County towards the future. So that's all I got. All right.
D squared. Thank you guys for coming. This isn't going to be the only at-large episode that we do. In case you were wondering, where are the other four guys?
More invitations are coming. This is a series.
We're limited on microphones.
If we tried to have all seven of them at one episode, um, it would, we would go till three in the morning.
Now you did do that with the sheriff's race a couple of years ago, right? There were how many?
Jay, how'd that go?
There were four.
Is that, there's only four?
Yeah.
It was a little crowded in here.
The mic.
He's practicing for being an elected official, not using his microphone. He's got it down.
You guys do have, we have to push the button. You have to push the button. Don't forget to push the button.
That, that's all I have.
You want to thank our sponsors.
And we talked about Wildland Flowers and Ink and Nail Brew House. I, the Ink and Nail Brew House guy that we talked to on the, uh, on the, the thing, he's going to be the chef. If you haven't listened, if you're like, uh, you know, I'm not.
He's early in the episode. Yeah. Listen, he kind of lays out the general scheme of the menu.
Yeah.
What's going on? And it sounds legit and it sounds good because he said my favorite word, he said burgers and I love burgers.
Yeah. It sounds like they're going to have some legit good food, but I mean, that's the juiciest piece of gossip that you can get in Henry County right now. It's what the new restaurant is going to be serving on their menu. So.
You heard it from Dakota first. Final thought from me. Thank you guys. I always, I'm, as John said, I'm so excited to have choices on the ballot. I don't know. I, I, I happened to run into Robin Fleming, uh, at the Elks Club last Friday night. And I think her husband was going to take a swing at me when I said, hey, Robin, you'd be a real interesting and nice thing for you to do if you ran, uh, in the fall. So we had some, so we could talk to everybody in the county council race again, because right now I think whoever, there's a very good chance that whoever ends up winning these races is going to be your council person in the fall. Very, very plausible that the three, three individuals that make it through are going to be the ones that go through on the fall ballot, potentially with no challenges.
There's not a single Democrat on the.
There's not a Democrat that's filed and they have until essentially July.
July 1st.
Uh, until July to put people on the ballot there. Uh, so I'm excited that we have seven names and seven very good choices, uh, right now. But I did try to pitch Robin Fleming and said, hey, you know, you were a pretty, you were a council person there for a long time and, you know, Chad, Chad beat you. But you know, you have your chance of a pound of flesh again, maybe in the fall. And her husband, I think was going to poison my food. Didn't have the buy-in, uh, from the other side of the, of the, so I, I'm not sure that I recruited, uh, Robin to run against you guys, but, maybe, maybe just maybe, uh, some folks that get motivated and want to get involved as well. Cause I think the more voices we have, the better it makes you all as council people, uh, as we get going. So, uh, no show next week. It's spring break. Uh, and I think everybody needs it. So our next episode will be April 4th, Thursday. So 14 days from today. With that, we say thank you and we'll see you then.